Good morning, everyone. Welcome to the Tuesday, March 20th, 2018 Placer County Board of Supervisors meeting. We're going to begin our meeting led by the flag suit led by Supervisor Wagen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We're going now move to our consent agenda. All items on the consent agenda have been recommended for approval by the county executive department. All items will be approved by a single roll call vote. Anyone may ask to address consent items prior to the board taking action, and the item may be pulled, moved for discussion. Are there any consent items from the board? Seeing none, anyone in the audience have a consent item they wish to be pulled? Seeing none, we'll move. I'll ask for a motion. What? Oh, in Tahoe, is anybody in Tahoe? No, thanks. Okay. So this is the part where someone makes a motion. It's been moved in seconds to approve the consent agenda. All those in favor? Oh, it's the roll call vote.
Duran, Wagen, Euler, Montgomery, Holmes.
Yes, thank you. Now we'll move to public comment. Persons may address the board on items not on this agenda. Please limit comments to three minutes per person since the time allocated for public comment is 15 minutes. If all comments cannot be heard within the 15-minute time limit, the public comment period will be taken up at the end of the regular session. The board is not permitted to take any action on any items addressed under public comment. I'm going to look to Tahoe, is there anyone in Tahoe that wishes to address under public comment? They're right here in front of us on the screen.
Good morning, Ellie Waller, North Tahoe resident. Thank you for the opportunity to provide public comment today. There has been a recent settlement with the California Clean Energy Committee on the Tahoe Basin Area Plan. Has a timeline been established to complete the scope of work as required by the litigation settlement? There are four tasks. I'll briefly provide a little bit of info. Document review to be performed by Nelson Nygaard to extract pertinent community data to include adopted goals, policies, and objectives. Case studies and best practices also to be performed by Nelson Nygaard, who will summarize and investigate case studies for traffic demand management. The TDM strategy planning using the Nelson Nygaard previous tasks focused on the areas of opportunity, target markets such as residents, permanent, and part-time employees, visitors, et cetera. And then two workshops that will be public meetings. The first meeting to focus on information gathering from meeting participants to gain insight, and second meeting will include the Nelson Nygaard staff presenting draft strategies. I think this would be a good opportunity to also maybe integrate this effort into the upcoming Sustainability Plan Public Workshop in April. Thank you so much for the opportunity today.
Thank you, Ellie. Anyone from Auburn area, please come forward.
Good morning. It's Bradley Cutler from Granite Bay again. We're here today because the crime in our neighborhood seems to have escalated. We have a serial violator whose record I'll review shortly, but he's had a list of flagrant violations that are not disputed, and he remains at large due to your inaction. Any of these violations would be ground for dismissal, but it doesn't seem to have occurred at this point. Just to review the record, he has falsified documents here. Planning Commissioner Moss represented the parcel numbers on 10 mini-storage applications by crossing out and writing the incorrect parcel. This was fraud and was purposeful to avoid a lot that was conditioned by the planning department to be a watershed for a prior project. The wetlands destruction, Commissioner Moss was the applicant and individual responsible for the project at 9961 Hadley, who ignored state environmental laws when he filled, destroyed, and altered over an acre of wetlands. For his actions, he was issued an notice of violation, paid $150,000 fine in mitigation fees, and has to restore those wetlands at some point in the future. He not only broke the law, but as a planning commissioner, he possessed extensive knowledge of environmental issues and concealed the existence of the wetlands, and falsified the application and blatantly violated his oath of office. Had not the Senator Gaines intervened, he probably wouldn't be free to represent Senator Euler, Supervisor Euler, and he's still representing the Board of Supervisors. He was also found to have been in violation of county codes dumping and storing over 400 tons of asphalt grinds on his property. Used his influence to remove it at his convenience three months after notification, which allowed sufficient time to pollute Linda Creek. It goes on, he also was the planning commissioner who operated business for five months without a business license. This was done in clear violation of county code, as it's illegal, to do so, and was advanced by the county officials from Moss's personal benefit. How many times does a business license stay pending for five months due to county law? Wetlands setback also, planning commissioner ignored the Placer County Code, his own conditions of rule, and the directives of the planning board by building his project at 9961, within the 100-foot wetland setback. No other applicant could have achieved this because they wouldn't have had plans to submit, and they would have had to show where the wetlands were and the trees, et cetera. But he didn't do that, and he got away with it. And lastly, the drainage study, as you all know, which was completed after the fact. The building footman would have been reduced to allow the required setbacks and reduce more to put his drainage swales in. So what is the answer? Your science implies consent. Your lack of action implies collusion. Are you defending these undisputed violations? Are you condoning the actions of dumping asphalt, altering stream beds, and falsifying documents? Are you prepared to answer how he operated for a half a year illegally without a business license, and why drainage reports are no longer even necessary even though they demonstrate a violation? Are you going to support the representatives that destroyed an acre of wetlands and laughed over burying and crushing Native American artifacts under his slab? Your science and actions do just that. Commissioner Moss is a serial violator, and he has no respect for your office. Please, we're moving.
Good morning. Scott, first off, I wanted to thank, I'm from Granite Bay, excuse me. I wanted to thank Supervisor Euler. He did have a meeting with 10 of us residents and county council last week. These are meeting minutes from our meeting. Council allowed us to record it, so they're pretty accurate. If you have a, just give it to Megan. First off, I want to say I agree, complete what Bradley has to say, and the five allegations he went through were not, county council agreed with them. So they said these were agreed items. That's five items that we know were violations. How many does it take? That's the question. Six, seven, two? Mr. Euler, you talked last time about how this body has a history of action with respect to illegal activity by planning commissioners. So I looked into that. You're right. And you removed Planning Commissioner Michelle Bures from District 5, not our district, in 2007. Commissioner Moss was, however, not sworn in to take her place. It was, he didn't come in until January 2009. He replaced Mike Stafford, right?
I didn't say that Commissioner Moss replaced.
Okay, all right. Fair enough. So anyway, Commissioner Moss, that's my bad then. I thought that you had said that he came in to replace that. So needless to say, Commissioner Moss, we have five confirmed violations minimum. We have a number of other ones still pending, and yet we have no action. I've asked Supervisor Holmes if I can get on the agenda so I have more than three minutes. My timer hasn't started. Does that mean I get forever? Awesome. You're going to do some stretches. I got some time. I know, I did it again. I did it again. So, well, if it didn't go, I'd have to keep talking till it was zero. So, you know, I've asked that this get added to an agenda item so we can talk about it instead of me go one way to you guys and hear nothing back. We've produced hundreds and hundreds of documents to support our case. We've talked with county council. The one I want to really talk about is landscaping. I know you had been out there Supervisor Holmes, and there is not a single plant, and we were told by the council, you're lucky to get rocks and bark, and that there was no conditions. Yet they tell us it was conditioned under a facility, under Tree Lake Terrace, and he had landscaping requirements in that specific EIR and in those approvals. Yet, when we go to talk about this one, he says, oh, they have no, there were no conditions of approval at all. He could build whatever he wants. I find that hard to believe. There's a development agreement that mentions what was required for landscaping. There's your Placer County standards that mention there's landscaping required. There's the previous projects and approvals that require landscaping, and yet the answer from county council was, he didn't have to build anything. I don't think that's acceptable, and I don't think you would think it was acceptable if you lived there as well. One other thing, I'm going to mention some new things because every week it seems like it's something different. And if you've seen the emails I provided to you, we now have semi-trucks, which are not legal. This is a 55-long-foot-long bed coming down a hill next to a park on a 25-foot-wide street. Okay? This thing's going to take 100 feet to stop. We have the stopping distances. It's parked right there in the storage facility. It comes up and down. That's against state vehicle code. I've given you the vehicle code. I've provided you the information. We're looking for fair and honest government and non-selective enforcement of issues. If you want to see how it's done right, it was done right in your district Supervisor Holmes. In 2014, you approved the Penrin RV and boat storage. All the conditions there, I provided that to you as well in an email. They limited it to 40-feet-long vehicles. That's not what we have here. We would like the laws followed. We would like you to take Commissioner Moss out of his seat because he's a serial violator. He's doing whatever he wants, and we come up here, we started in January. No action. We've met with you, I appreciate that, but still, no action. So what does it take to action? Is this going to take years and years without some sort of meeting together? We can't talk through it. We can reach no sort of agreement on what is required, and we end up going back and forth. And then we end up having to sue every single time because that's the only way we can get any response. It's absolutely ludicrous for a representative government to be silent, to never talk to its people. When we were voting, you want to hear from us. It's not election year, so you don't want to hear from us. I got it. Thank you.
Good morning.
Good morning. My name is Paul Gallo. I'm a longtime resident of Placer County. On March 15th, the Placer County State of Jefferson Committee submitted to you, the Board of Supervisors, a request for an up-and-down vote on a non-sanctuary resolution. A draft of the resolution along with copies of non-sanctuary resolutions, which have already been voted on in Tehemah, Siskiyou, Shasta, and the cities of Anderson, Lincoln, and Calusa, declaring that they would comply with federal immigration laws pursuant to Article 1, Section 8, and Article 6 of the U.S. Constitution. Also, the city of Los Alamos will be adopting a resolution next week to exempt itself from the sanctuary state laws. Other counties and cities will be following. During Attorney General Sessions' announcement last week, he stated that the laws are not only unconstitutional, but also a plain violation of federal statute and common sense. It is time that our county representatives have sworn to protect and defend the Constitution of the United States, support our county law enforcement agencies, who have been put in a very precarious position of having to choose between a dangerous state law and their oath of office. We have already seen firsthand consequences of these irresponsible state policies. In 2014, we lost two of our finest local officers to the actions of an illegal immigrant, who should have never been in this country in the first place. We should never have to deal with these needless tragedies, including a Kate Steinle event in our community. Your adoption of this resolution will do several things. Ensure the voters of our county that you will uphold your oath of office and secure their safety. It will show your support for our local law enforcement agencies, and it will send a clear message to the governor and legislature that you choose the supremacy of the Constitution of the United States over the recklessness of the state sanctuaries, laws, and policies. We request that the Placer County Board of Supervisors include a non-sanctuary resolution in the agenda and call for an up or down vote at the next Placer County Board of Supervisors meeting. The people of Placer County need to know if their elected county representatives will support our citizens and law enforcement in opposing SB 54 and SB 450, which give sanctuary and protection to illegals, immigrants. Thank you.
Thank you, Paul.
Good morning.
Good morning. Jim Davis, Auburn. I'm here today on behalf, on my own behalf, to support the proposed resolution to have Placer County opt out of California's sanctuary legislation, specifically Senate Bill 54 and Assembly Bill 450. Last night, the City Council of Los Alamos in Southern California voted 4 to 1 to approve an ordinance that exempts their municipality from SB 54. And last month, the Shasta County Board of Supervisors approved a resolution saying their county is not a sanctuary jurisdiction. To exempt Placer County as a sanctuary jurisdiction is to support public safety and ensure that our law enforcement has the ability to cooperate fully with federal authorities, and that our business owners will not be bullied into compliance by a vindictive California Department of Justice. I can understand if the two Democrats on this board, Supervisor Duran, Supervisor Montgomery, are compelled to follow the Democratic Party's political agenda on immigration and not support this resolution. That's why I'm asking Supervisor Wagen, who is up for reelection, to use this opportunity to get his fellow supervisors, who stand for public safety and the rights of business owners, to vote on this resolution before June 5th. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning, ladies and gentlemen. My name's Greg Walsh. I live in Colfax, and I'm a native Californian. And as these gentlemen just talked, they did a nice job of presenting the case with illegal invaders. I understand the word immigrants, immigrants immigrate. We have immigration laws. Invaders invade. To give you an idea where I'm coming from, my daughter was personal friends with Kate Steinle. I pray for her family. I was in the neighborhood on College Drive 45 minutes before Officer Davis was shot a little over two years ago. I am able to protect myself, and I hope I never have to in those cases, but under the circumstances, this is what we deal with if you're serious about this stuff. Illegal invaders have got to be stopped coming to our state. Now, in regard to Democrat or Republican, I don't care. I'm not a Democrat. I'm not a Republican. I don't care for either party, to be honest with you. I'm more a propagator. You can see a problem, you got to fix it. That's all there is to it. We've got a problem in the state of California, and the problem is our government. You know, you've got a lawless governor. You've got a lawless Attorney General. I mean, the Attorney General took his oath of office to uphold and swear, he swore in the Bible to uphold and defend the Constitution of the United States. And in the same breath, he said he was going to fight the President of the United States. You guys, I want the United States, not the divided states. I'm sick and tired of a war on God, a war on cops, a war on religion, a war on education in this country. This country is falling apart. The good news is, I got a friend that drives truck, and he delivers white freight liners throughout the United States and Canada. Picks them up in Mexico, four at a time, and delivers them all over. I called him about two weeks ago. He's my economic guy from the road. He's my news reporter from the road. I called him and said, Phil, what are you up to? And he goes, are you still in California? He moved to Texas six years ago. And he said he was in California two times in the last couple, in the last month, dropping off trucks in Southern California. 45 seconds. And he said, all they do, all they did at the stops that he went to, all they complained about was the homeless and the gas tax. Every place else in this country, every other state he goes to, people are happy now. What's wrong with California? This is it right here. They don't use our Constitution. This is the Constitution that the cameras on, that these, whatever you want to call them, people that are in our authority of managing our government are doing right now. They're using Agenda 21 as their manual to destroy us from within. Open borders, you know, and Jerry Brown endorsed the Agenda 21 in 1992 at the Rio Summit. George Bush did also. These people are globalists. I want to close the door on this thing, and I'd like you to support the declaration to fight our government on the sanctuary state bill. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Good morning, Kim.
Good morning. Good morning, Mr. Chairman and Honorable Supervisors. I'm here on behalf of Congressman Tom McLaughlin to support local citizens groups with the resolution against the sanctuary state. And I do have a letter from the congressman. I'm not going to read it. I just want to present it to the chairman in support of a resolution against the sanctuary state. As you know, the congressman's a constitutionalist and believes that the law should be upheld, supports law enforcement and public safety, and so I just wanted to present this letter to you today.
Thanks, Kim. Anyone else wish to address the board under public comment? Good morning.
Good morning. I have a questionnaire here for you. If you could please give each board member. I'll be up at the end of our meeting. I would like this information filled out. Good morning. My name is Shawna Seifert, and I am here to stand up for our local community members for our Prop 215 civil rights. My son has epilepsy and had a Prop 215 recommendation, and the corrupt Prop 64 that this board has written has violated my civil rights, my son's civil rights, and all of our community members' civil rights. So with that being said, I need to get this particular information. I need you to give me your name and the district that you represent. I would like you to each answer all of these questions on this questionnaire. As I said, I'll pick it up after the meeting. I would like to know what college you all graduated from. I would like to know what medical school you got your degrees from. I would like to know which state issued your medical licenses. I'd also like to know who is your medical malpractice insurance policy active with currently, and I need that policy number and your agent. I also need to know who your expert on your Prop 215 representative is. And I also want to know who your expert for Prop 64 is. I'd also like to know, I would like to know all of the people who wrote our Prop 64. I want to know the people that are accountable for this prop. My son has not been medicated since June 22nd, where your special ops people came in under an illegal raid, arrested my friend, stole my son's coconut oil that your experts called honey hash butane oil. It's all been tested. It's all lies, and I'm taking this county down with lies. I will not stand here and allow this county to violate my constitutional rights. I have glaucoma. I will be blind before I'm old, and this medication has saved my eyesight. I have a legal doctor recommendation. So I would like to know who is the expert and who is your medical professional that trumps my doctor's recommendation? Thank you. I'll pick that paper up after the meeting.
Is there anyone else that wishes to address the board under public comment? I will then close public comment and move to board member and county executive reports. Any board member reports?
Yes. Supervisor. I'll wait till it calms down a little, I guess. So as the chairman and my colleagues know, Supervisor Montgomery and I have the pleasure of representing our board on the newly formed Joint Powers Authority Pioneer Energy, where we, along with the incorporated cities, with the exception of the city of Roseville, are now providing electricity to the customers in Placer County. We began with a rate-setting meeting back in November, and at the rate-setting meeting in November, we set our rates at 3% below then-current PG&E rates. Subsequent to that, PG&E had a rate case before the California Public Utilities Commission. That rate case resulted in PG&E increasing their rates between 8 and 10%, depending on your rate schedule. And so we at Pioneer Power, at our meeting yesterday, made the decision that we were not going to follow PG&E's rates up, and so now we sit with Pioneer Power customers with an average cost of electricity about 9 to 10% less than PG&E customers. So it's definitely tracking in the right direction on behalf of ratepayers in Placer County.
Thank you, Supervisor Euler. Supervisor Duran?
Yes, I just wanted to report out on the Placer School Safety Forum. As you may recall, we had a safety forum on March 8th at the Newgrounds Jones Hall. Very happy to see approximately close to 300 people attend the forum, where representatives from the Roseville Joint Union High School District, Roseville Police Department, Placer County Office of Education, Placer County Office of Health and Human Services, and also our probation office provided vital, and in addition to the Roseville Joint Union High School District, provided some insight into school safety and how all of our organizations collaborate to make school safety a priority here in Placer County. Want to thank all of those entities, especially our Public Information Office. They were the ones in audio/video. That forum, which is approximately two hours long, is available both on YouTube and VIMO. And I encourage anybody who wants some more insight on how we, as a county, approach school safety with each school jurisdiction to take a look at that video. And if you have any questions, refer those questions to your own district administration. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Supervisor Montgomery.
Two things. The first is, at the last board meeting, I mentioned that I would be testifying at a state hearing that was originally scheduled for tomorrow. Unfortunately, they changed that hearing to today, so I will be unable to represent Placer County residents and have the discussions around firing property insurance, but I believe there will be some folks there who will very ably be able to represent the concerns that we share. Second, I had the opportunity to attend my first California Tahoe Conservancy meeting. Our appointee, Mr. Savison, was in Hawaii on his traditional March vacation, but was a really sort of a planning opportunity to do some strategic planning and some policymaking around the next five years of the California Tahoe Conservancy's kind of master plan, and was a great opportunity, frankly, to raise some issues that were of interest to all of the local jurisdictions, Placer County, El Dorado County, City of South Lake Tahoe, around our partnership with the Tahoe Conservancy, which has been largely extremely productive, and we've had some great outcomes out of that relationship. But frankly, you know, there are some ways in terms of their grant-making process and how we implement those that we could be more effective on our side. They could put less staff time to sort of overseeing us, and we could still get the same terrific outcomes. I was delighted that City of South Lake Tahoe and El Dorado County said yes, that. So hopefully that as we move forward with this process, we'll be able to be much more productive around using those grant opportunities with the Tahoe Conservancy. But great meeting, and had a number of Placer County staffers there who brought some really valuable insight to the conversation as well.
Thank you. All righty, then, we will move to our 9:05 timed item, Health and Human Service Proclamation declaring April 2018 as Child Abuse Prevention Awareness Month. Good morning.
Good morning, Chair Holmes, Supervisors, Mr. Leopold, Mr. Carden, Twyla Abrahamson, presenting here for the Children's System of Care. We are here today to ask your board to approve a proclamation declaring April 2018 as Child Abuse Prevention Awareness Month in Placer County. And I'm joined here also by Barbara Pisana, the Executive Director for Kids First, and she'll have a few remarks after me as well. So Placer County Health and Human Services and the Children's System of Care work collaboratively with a number of community partners to both prevent and treat child abuse neglect, including our Family Resource Centers, law enforcement, faith-based communities, and others. Chief among these Chief among these partners is the Tahoe Truckee Community Foundation, who serves as our Tahoe Truckee Child Abuse Prevention Council, and Kids First, who serves as the Child Abuse Prevention Council for Western Placer County. Kids First has for the past 29 years led local efforts to raise awareness about child abuse and neglect, educate the community, and has delivered a variety of services which assist and support Placer's families in creating healthy and nurturing homes in which children can thrive. The month of April is National Child Abuse Prevention Awareness Month, and Placer County desires to support Kids First and all allied community partners in raising awareness and providing education to the community regarding the most effective methods of preventing child abuse. We would also like to encourage all employees, Board of Supervisors members, and other county partners to wear blue ribbons the first full week of April and wear all blue on April 6th. So thank you for your consideration and passing in approving this proclamation.
Thank you. Hi, Barbara.
Hey, thank you. I got this one.
She came with goodies.
Yeah, and they're actually in the back room for you. I have a couple of them for you to go. First of all, I want to thank the Honorable Chair and board members, and welcome Todd to your position, for the support and collaboration that is Placer County that makes efforts in child abuse prevention and neglect such a success. But we're not done. We have a ways to go. But with the great collaboration and the allied partners, we're making a difference. As you'll note on the handout that I gave to you, because of your support, nearly 6,000 individuals were served by Kids First last year. Thirty-nine hundred of those were children. 2,500 approximately families have made a difference because of your support. Because of the support of Placer County and your efforts, Community Services Block Grant, we're helping people to retain their homes to prevent homelessness. We're helping educate people so that they can read at a third-grade level and succeed in school. We're helping people who have suffered trauma and postpartum depression get the therapy that they need so their lives can be successful and they can thrive in their communities. With your support, we've reached nearly 12,000 people in outreach events this year, and that makes a difference, not only because of the awareness, but because they too are the voice and the eyes and the ears that can help prevent child abuse and neglect. Because of our collaborative efforts, Placer County is one of the hallmark service providers fighting child abuse and neglect and helping families. From the events that we put on awaiting awareness, like the April luncheon, we will be acknowledging and providing awards to those people in the community that make a difference in the lives of children and families, such as Ruth Burgess, who has her lifetime devoted to child dental care along with Placer County, and Mia Behrens, who is a child abuse survivor and now promotes awareness and resilience in those around here with the message. I want to thank you for all that you do and the continued collaboration that is successful because of your support and your efforts. Wanted to, in the back room, you have a child abuse prevention kit, and it is below $25,000 -- excuse me, $25 value and is funded by the Office of Child Abuse Prevention. You have your starter kit for your pinwheels to plant your pinwheel gardens, as well as a pin to wear throughout the month, and we encourage you to wear blue on April 6th, attend the luncheon, and support those efforts throughout the month. Also, on April 18th, we have a child abuse prevention forum that will be welcomed by Angela Planaviss, which is the OCAP Director. We have Haven Struthers, who is a child abuse survivor, parent from Placer County, and also Assemblyman Kevin Kiley will help share some of the efforts that are being made at the statewide level. So I thank you again for your collaboration, your efforts, and making a difference in the lives of children and families.
Thank you. So now it's my great honor to present this proclamation. Whereas all adults and caregivers have a responsibility as neighbors, community members, and citizens of Placer County to help create healthy, safe, and nurturing experiences for children and youth, and whereas safety and safe and healthy childhoods help produce confident, successful, and independent adults, and whereas child abuse neglect often occurs when people find themselves in isolated or stressful situations without community resources and don't know how to cope, and whereas the majority of child abuse cases stem from situations and conditions that are preventable when our communities are supportive, active, and engaged, and whereas child abuse and neglect can be reduced by making sure every family has the support it needs and deserves to raise their children in a healthy environment, and whereas effective prevention programs succeed because of partnerships among agencies, schools, religious organization, law enforcement agencies, and the business community, and Placer County's collaborative is among the most effective in the country, and whereas for 29 years, Kids First comprised of two counseling and family resource centers located in Roseville and Auburn, has served the Western Placer County as a Child Abuse Prevention Council, and whereas the North Lake Tahoe Child Abuse Prevention Council, in coordination with the Tahoe Truckee Community Foundation, serves the North Lake Tahoe Basin, and whereas wearing the color blue, wearing a blue ribbon or displaying a pinwheel in April will serve as a positive reminder that together we can prevent child abuse and keep children safe. Now therefore, let it be proclaimed that the above proclamation was duly passed by the Board of Supervisors of the County of Placer on behalf of the citizens of Placer County at a regular meeting held March 20, 2018. And so I will bring this down, and then we'll come back and take action.
I know, there's a lot of blue in the items. Thank you.
So I need a motion and a second, and we'll adopt this.
So moved?
It's moved in second to approve the proclamation declaring April 2018 as Child Abuse Prevention Awareness Month. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye? Any opposed? Better not be. All right, thank you. Now we'll move to our 9:10 AM timed item, Placer County Housing Authority, Housing Assistance for Very Low Income, Homeless, Disabled, and Elderly Placer County Residents. Yes? Oh, yes, we are adjourning as the Placer County Board of Supervisors and convening as the Placer County Housing Authority. Thank you, Supervisor Ullrich. Morning.
Good morning, Chair Holmes, members of the board, Mr. Carden, Mr. Leopold. I'm Susan Kimbley, the Assistant Director with your Human Services Division and the Placer County Housing Authority. I have today with me also Nancy Ria, Supervisor for the Housing Authority. Today, we're here to ask you to consider the following items to secure $2,458,573 in federal funding for Placer County Section 8 Housing Choice Voucher Program to provide subsidized housing vouchers for up to 345 low-income individuals, families, and veterans in Placer County for fiscal year 2018-19. We're asking that you conduct a public hearing to receive public comments regarding the updated Placer County Housing Authority Administrative Plan, adopt the updated administrative plan, adopt a resolution authorizing acceptance of the updated plan, and authorize submission of the certifications of program compliance to the Department of Housing and Urban Development, or HUD. The Housing Choice Voucher Program and the HUD Veterans Affairs Supportive Housing Program are federal programs for assisting very low-income families, the elderly, the homeless, veterans, and the disabled to afford decent, safe, and sanitary housing in the private market. Housing Choice vouchers are administered locally through funds received from the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development. These programs provide subsidized housing assistance for approximately 538 Placer County residents. Since housing assistance is provided on behalf of the family or individual, participants are able to find and choose their own housing, including single-family homes, townhouses, and apartments, provided it meets the requirements of the program. These programs are not limited to units located in subsidized housing projects, thus also supporting the private property owner in Placer County. The Placer County Housing Authority has been determined a high-performing housing authority for the eighth consecutive year, once again receiving a perfect score of 100% on its annual Section 8 Management Assessment Program Review, or CMAP. As such, the Housing Authority is also designated as a qualified housing authority, exempt from submitting annual and five-year plans. Qualified public housing authorities must however conduct an annual public hearing and for at least 45 days before the date of the hearing make all information relevant to the hearing and any information regarding changes to the goals, objectives, and policies of the agency to be considered at that hearing available for inspection by the public. In addition, each qualified public housing authority is required to submit a civil rights certification to the local HUD office. Changes to the PCHA Administrative Plan this year include only minor modifications to HUD regulatory requirements as needed for clarification and wording. The updated plan was noticed in newspapers in Auburn, Rockland, and Lincoln, and made available for review online at the PCHA office in Auburn and the Placer County Human Services website for a 45-day public comment period prior to the public hearing. No written comments have been received to this date. Any comments from the hearing before your board today will be included in the final plan. Compliance with the public housing agency plan requirement is necessary to continue to receive federal funding in the amount of $2,458,573 for fiscal year 2018-19 with a request for county general fund contribution in the amount of $211,314. With that, we would ask that you open the public hearing, consider any public comments, and subsequently approve this item. We would also be happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Okay, any questions from board members before I open the public hearing? Seeing none, this is a public hearing. I'll open the public hearing. Anyone from the public wish to address the board on this item? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing. We've been asked to consider the following items to secure $2,458,573 in federal funding for Placer County Section 8 Housing Choice Voucher Program. Anybody? Oh, okay. Okay, it's been moved in second to approve the item. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye? Any objections? Any negativity? The item is moved. Thank you. Easy for me to say.
Thank you.
All right, now we will adjourn as the Placer County Housing Authority and reconvene as the Placer County Board of Supervisors. This is a public works item. Oh, it's not 10 o'clock yet, is it? Wow, we're moving right along.
It is a public works item.
Yeah, thank you. Okay, so we will now move to department item number six, Human Resources, Deferred Compensation Agreement with Lincoln Financial Group and Deferred Compensation Plan, divider, provider. Whoa, I should have brought my glasses.
Thank you, Chairman Holmes and members of the board. I'm Kate Sampson with your County Executive Office, presenting on behalf of your Deferred Compensation Committee this morning. So today, we'd like to provide you with an overview of a recent request for proposals that was issued for deferred compensation services and make a recommendation to your board for an award. Just by way of background, your Deferred Compensation Committee consists of seven members that are appointed by this board. It is chaired by Lori Walsh, your Human Resources Director, includes your Treasurer-Tax Collector, your Auditor-Controller, a member of the Placer Public Employees Organization, and Deputy Sheriff's Associations, as well as a representative for retirees, and lastly, myself. The committee's purpose is to provide fiduciary oversight of deferred compensation plans sponsored by the county. Currently, the county has four defined contribution plans. The agreements for those have been in place for over 10 years. Your current providers are CalPERS and MassMutual. They each administer both a 401K and 457B plans for a total of four. So due to that fiduciary oversight that you have delegated to the committee, they elected to initiate a request for proposals last June in order to benchmark current costs against industry standards. They were hoping to obtain a better cost structure for participants, and finally, they were hoping to promote financial wellness. The committee supports deferred compensation for employees in order to increase productivity and reduce absenteeism that can result from financial stress. So the RFP was released in June. Proposals were due in July. There were 92 firms that accessed those RFP documents, and 10 qualified firms submitted From there, those proposals started on an evaluation process, began with a selection panel that scored those proposals on the published criteria in the RFP. There were a number of elements they were being scored on, including industry experience, organization of financial strength, capability of providing the scope of services, proposed fees, and demonstrated client services and education. Based on the scores by the selection panel, three firms were shortlisted to provide presentations to an interview panel. They did so in August of last year, and based on the scores from that panel, in addition to cost proposals, a recommendation was made to your executive sponsors for this RFP, which included your Treasurer-Tax Collector, your auditor, myself, and county council. The executive sponsors spent a number of weeks further evaluating those proposals and posing additional questions to the top three finalists, as well as conducting further cost analysis, and they affirmed to the Deferred Comp Committee the ranking provided by your selection panel. Which brings us to the recommendation by your Deferred Compensation Committee. There are two elements to this recommendation, and the first is regarding the number of providers currently used. As I mentioned, we currently have two firms that provide services for your plan participants, which is very common. A 2016 survey of 4,100 public agencies showed that a majority of your similar peers across the country have more than one vendor for deferred compensation. You can see counties as that first bar on this chart. Of the 750 responding counties, about 60% had two vendors, but interestingly, you see that blue bar is filled up almost as high. That represents agencies that are interested in consolidating to one firm. So you would be right on trend with your peers for considering consolidation. Some of our concerns with the current arrangement with two providers include duplicative administrative efforts, both from administering the contracts to enrolling employees, issuing hardship and loan payments can be, can require just dual effort with more than one vendor. One of the more important elements was communication and education. With two vendors, we currently provide equal time to each in order to provide employee education, which limits the committee's ability to work with a partner vendor in order to provide a really comprehensive education and communication plan. It ends up just being, you know, offering equal time to both vendors, and while they have good offerings, there's no overarching plan associated. And lastly, the amount of investment options currently may be overwhelming to participants. This is a, just an interesting graph here to illustrate that there have been a number of behavioral science studies regarding the amount of choice available to consumers and their ability to make a decision, or in this case, purchase, based on the number of choices presented. So this study in 2007 actually was conducted regarding buying pens, and how many pens, how many choices do you need before you can make a decision? And while the subject is less important, I will note this bell curve is consistent in terms of making choices, where minimal choice results in folks not being willing to make a decision. Then you see a more moderate number of choices allows up to 90% of folks to then make a decision and, in this case, invest their funds. But you get too much choice and you slide down to the lower end again on the ability of consumers to be able to move forward with a decision. With our With our current plans each having over fifteen investment options, the committee was concerned, again, that just the sheer number of alternatives available may be overwhelming to your current participants. There are some benefits of consolidating to one provider, including improving participation through comprehensive communication and education. The committee is hoping to receive clear reporting and demographics when partnering just with one firm, as well as being able to really clearly assess customer satisfaction with that firm. But perhaps most importantly is the ability to reduce overall costs, first from streamlining those administrative efforts I mentioned, and then having more negotiating power by consolidating all assets under one plan. There's about $185 million in assets that belong to the participants, over which the committee exercises fiduciary responsibility. And we find, based on the responses to the proposal, that consolidating all of those assets really provides us the best negotiating power with these firms, which result ultimately in lower fees for the participants. For those reasons, your committee is recommending that we consolidate plans to one vendor, and the recommended vendor is Lincoln Financial Group. This was the top-ranked firm through this competitive process for a number of reasons, but I'll outline a few here. The first is lowest pricing for best-in-class fund lineup. And I will note that while Lincoln has a host of funds available, the committee has not made any selections yet about what funds may ultimately be available to participants. We feel that there are a number of best-in-class options to choose from. And I will note that one of your current providers has offered a stable value account as part of its portfolio. It has been guaranteed at 4% since the 90s, and that firm, in its proposal during this part of the process, has chosen to discontinue that offering. Additionally, the fees proposed exceeded those of Lincoln Financial, so the committee did not feel that it was in the best interest of all plan participants to continue to pursue that, particularly since the 4% guarantee would no longer be offered under the firm's new proposal. But some of the additional services provided by Lincoln Financial really tipped the scales in their favor when the selection committee was evaluating the proposals. I'd like to go over a few of those with you here. In terms of tools and services offered, Lincoln has some really great online tools that are proven to increase plan contributions by an average of just about 4%, which is really beneficial to your participants over time. Additionally, they provide in-person education, again, proven that participants are four times more likely to increase their contribution rates when meeting with their retirement consultants. The committee is pretty excited that Lincoln offers fiduciary services as part of its package, so they would be responsible through Morningstar for selection, monitoring, removal, and replacement of investment options. That responsibility currently resides with your committee, and so the committee would rely on the prudent and expert advice of Morningstar through Lincoln and just monitor those decision points moving forward. Additionally, Lincoln offers service-level guarantees, so on a number of different aspects of the contract, Lincoln offers benchmarks for the target turnarounds and things like that. If they don't meet those standards, there are financial penalties in the contract that they would pay for not meeting those guaranteed service levels. Finally, the committee was very impressed with Lincoln Financial's transition plan. They offer customized and robust communications for our employees and retirees, things that participants can look forward to, our enrollment guides, brochures, employee meetings here on site, and a conversion website that serves as a hub where all the transition information could be found over the course of a 12-to-14-week transition period. There are also contemporary contract terms proposed, which are a benefit over our more longstanding agreements, and dedicated implementation staff to assist in the transition period. This is just a sample, I thought I'd show you of the package created by Lincoln, customized according to Placer County's branding, so that employees recognize it as, you know, part of our offerings, and, you know, while this may not be the final iteration, it just gives you a sense of the partnership they're looking to build with Placer County. So for those reasons, all votes cast by the Deferred Compensation Committee were in support of this recommendation, and I would invite Matt Bartholomew, who is our representative from the PPEO and participated in the selection committee, to just make a few comments to you about Lincoln Financial.
Morning, Matt.
Morning. I haven't pressed this button before, first time. Anyhow, thank you. First, PPEO appreciates having a seat at the table and a voice in the process for this selection. Many, perhaps most, of our current members and retired members are affected by this decision. So I direct that both to your board and to my fellow committee members. Thank you for that. Secondly, the Lincoln proposal was very strong and very competitive, and I'm pleased to support their selection as a plan provider. And that's about it. Be happy to take any questions.
All right. Any questions from board members? I see none. Is there anyone from the public that wishes to address the board on this item? Please come forward.
Good morning. Vicki Ramsey, Auburn resident, recent Placer County retiree. I just wanted to really make a quick comment. Myself, like a lot of other Placer County employees, have utilized the Deferred Comp accounts for many, many years, and we really have appreciated that option and have put a lot of work into trying to utilize that and save up a fund. I, myself, and some friends of mine additionally, have used the Stable Value Fund that was alluded to, you know, earlier, as a significant part of our portfolio investment strategy to have a safe place to, you know, park some funds. So I would ask that when the contract is negotiated with the actual plans available for our use, that the county use its negotiating power to leverage, to offer an account similar to that offered in the past by Hartford and now MassMutual. We would really appreciate that and would be really hopeful to, I think, our long-term financial well-being. Thank you very much for your time. Bye-bye.
Thank you. Any other comments from the public? Seeing none. Is there somewhere we can address her concern? Is someone?
Yes, Lincoln Financial does offer a Stable Value Account that will continue to be available to participants if that's the investment option they choose. As I mentioned, it will not be guaranteed at 4% as it has been the past option, but there will be a guaranteed level that folks can elect, or there are a number of other fund lineups that they can choose from as well.
So the past option is no longer available, is that correct?
If we were to move forward with a new contract, that is correct.
Okay, all right, good. All righty, anyone else in the public? Seeing none, we'll bring it back to the board for action. It's been moved and seconded to approve the item. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye? Any opposed, any abstentions? Hearing none, my item is moved. Well, we have a little dilemma where it's almost ten o'clock. I hesitate to bring the public works item forward because it's a fifteen-minute presentation, so. I beg your pardon? Okay, now I've got my glasses, I can see, actually see what I'm doing here. Reorganization seven, Zone 24, Applegate Sewer, and item two, resolution to annex all parcels connected to the sewer systems. Mr. Atkinson?
Morning, Mr. Chair, members of the board. Dave Atkinson, Department of Public Works and Facilities. We're here this morning to ask your board's consideration of two actions that, if approved, would formalize the relationship between the Applegate Sewer System and Sewer Maintenance District Number One that currently serves the unincorporated area of North Auburn. For the benefit of the public present, I'll begin with a brief summary of the history of the project. The public sewer system for Applegate was constructed in 1975 and was done so to provide continued wastewater services for several parcels that had failing septic systems. The new public system at that time included pipelines, a pumping station, and treatment ponds. Problems with the pond capacity during wet weather resulted in several violations and enforcement actions by the Regional Water Quality Control Board over the ensuing years. In 2006, a settlement between the county and the Regional Water Quality Control Board was finally reached, which included strict requirements for costly trucking of wastewater until the completion of a regionalization project that would pump wastewater from Applegate to Sewer Maintenance District Number One, and that project was completed in 2013. The regionalization project, one of many undertaken by the county to deal with several out-of-compliance wastewater treatment systems, included a pumping station and a pipeline under Interstate, under Interstate 80 to the distance of about four and a half miles, which connected Applegate to the Winchester offsite pipeline. The cost of the project was $8.1 million and was funded through a combination of EPA grant and loans backed by the county's general fund. The general fund also provided contributions to the Applegate Sewer Operating Fund that were necessary to allow continued compliance with the settlement agreement until the project came online. With the completion of the regional project and the payment of all of the outstanding debts through the general fund contributions, staff is asking your board to hold the necessary public hearings, consider any protests, and adopt a resolution to dissolve the Zone 24 Applegate Sewer County Service Area 28. And should your board approve this action, to then hold a second public hearing and then approve a resolution to annex the properties that are described in the legal descriptions in your packet into the boundaries of Sewer Maintenance District Number One. I'd also like to report that staff has made all the necessary mailings and postings as required, and staff also made a presentation at the North Auburn MAC as well as the Weimar Applegate Colfax MAC, and both MACs were approving of these requests. Following the first public hearing, the clerk of the board is ready to report out the number of protests received and whether a valid protest threshold has been reached prior to your board considering the first action, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Any questions from board members before I open the public hearing? Seeing none, this is a public hearing. Does anybody wish to address the board on this item? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing. I'll then ask the clerk if there have been any protests.
We received one protest, which does not mean a majority protest.
All righty, and then we kindly tabulate the ballots.
One.
One ballot? It's affirmative?
It is affirmative, only one.
All right, good. Okay, so now we will ask the board to take action.
This is a resolution dissolving Zone 24 contingent on the approval of the following item.
Right. Okay, all those in favor of item 3A, please say aye. Aye? Any opposed, any abstentions? Hearing none. Now we'll move to item two, to adopt a resolution to annex all parcels connected to the sewer systems.
We need to open the public hearing for the second item.
Oh, okay. All right, I'll open the public hearing. Is there anyone that wishes to address the board on this item? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing and bring it back to the board for action.
I move that we adopt Agenda Item 3A2.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to approve Agenda Item 3A2. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye? Any opposed, any abstentions? Hearing none, the item is moved. Thank you, Ms. Atkinson.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate the board's support.
You're welcome. Now, I believe we can go to item seven, Public Works and Facilities. This is a five-year capital improvement plan for facilities, and it's an update.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning, chair members of the board. Dave DeFanti with the county executive office. I'll provide a very brief introduction and then turn it over to Department of Public Works and Facility staff for the presentation. So as this board is very well aware, the county has a long history of planning, funding, and building capital facilities, really starting in earnest in the mid-1990s with the Capital Facilities Master Plan, Criminal Justice Master Plan, adoption of the Capital Facilities Impact Fee, and thereby annually after adopting a Capital Facilities Financing Plan to show how certain projects would be funded and built over the years. As a result of those efforts, the county has built a number of facilities since that time, notably most of which without debt, including the Finance and Administration Building, or otherwise known as the Larry Otto Building, the Juvenile Detention Facility, the Cedar Building, South Placer Corrections, et cetera, et cetera. Apologize, like many of us, running with a little bit of a cold here, so. So for the last twenty years, again, very long, successful history of planning for and funding buildings, some of those comprehensive capital facility plans and discussions really kind of slowed during the recession years, although the county weathered the recession better than far most of its peers across the state. Some of those comprehensive capital planning discussions slowed during that time as attention and resources were focused elsewhere. The Capital Facilities Financing Plan was last adopted in 2011, and since that time, although a number of individual capital discussions at the department level and with the board have proceeded, there really hasn't been that overall context that was once embodied within that Capital Facilities Financing Plan. So really, this effort is about getting back to where we were just a, just a short few years ago, prior to the recession. So in March of 2017, we held a workshop with the board to discuss capital facilities priorities and planning. We had a second workshop in August of last year, August 15th, where the board directed us to prepare a five-year capital improvement plan with, that would include both addressing new county buildings, and we got direction from the board to proceed forward with the funding and construction of a number of new buildings, and Steve will touch on those in just a moment, as well as addressing in a more comprehensive fashion, building maintenance, so maintaining the building stock we currently have, as well as renovations, the improvements within buildings to help improve either customer service or employee experience. So with that, we are moving forward with creating the capital improvement plan to address those, those three elements. We've taken a number of steps since August that you'll hear about today, and then we'll also want to touch on next steps that would lead us to presenting a draft CIP to the board in June, along with the proposed budget. So with that, I'll turn it over to Steve Newsome to provide a quick update on where we're at with both new buildings as well as renovation requests.
Morning, Steve. Good morning, Steve Newsome, Deputy Director of Capital Improvements. Very excited this morning to give you an update on the projects that were approved to move forward in August of 2017, first of which is the new Coroner Facility. Programming for the facility has been completed, and criteria documents contract is actually the next board item, which I'll give you more detailed information on in a few minutes. The, the project will be planned to move into a design-build contract, anticipated to be presented to your board later in 2018, with project completion in the fall of 2020. The two jail capital projects that participate with the, the state funding arm are SB 863 and SB 844. Those rolled out consecutively by the state, SB 863 being the, the first project moving forward. Capital Improvements is working on the selection process of a design-build team and will return to your board to request approval to construct the new addition to the South Placer Jail, and the estimated completion for that project is the fall of 2020. And following a number of months behind that is the SB 844 project, and the process with the state began after SB 863, and it will follow the same process, also going through a, a design-build selection criteria. through a design-build selection criteria. That project's estimated completion is in early 2021. The Auburn Jail retrofit of Housing Unit 3 is currently in the construction documents phase. Capital Improvement staff will return to your Board to request approval to bid plans and specs in late 2018, with anticipated completion in 2019. The Elections Warehouse, if you recall, this is a primarily a move to a to-be renovated facility on the DeWitt campus. We're currently in the schematic design phase in that project, and Capital Improvement staff will return to the Board to request approval to bid plans and specs in late 2018, with completion of that project also in 2019. All of the projects that I've given you updates on to date have been really successful collaborative processes with -- between Capital Improvements, Building Maintenance, and the departments that are operating these programs, so we're very pleased at the progress. They continue to all move forward, and I did hear that there was a request for a brief update on the Affordable Housing Project on the DeWitt Campus. So also very pleased to give you that, and there will be further, more detailed update at the April 10th Board Meeting. But right now, we are working with the top-ranked proposing team, Mercy Housing, and the entitlements process is underway, and we do anticipate at this time that the project would be constructed and completed in 2021. So there's a tremendous amount of work going on throughout the county, with a lot of construction coming in the next year or two. As Mr. DeFanti noted, we have a process for building rehabilitation, building renovation, and project planning. The $1 million building renovation projects, which are primarily program improvements for different departments, we developed a new process for reviewing those, where a department will submit an application for an idea, we call it an idea application, and so that's the very early steps of potentially becoming a project, and there are some criteria that are established for the departments to complete on this form. They then work with our staff in Capital Improvements, and we come up with some very preliminary cost estimates with them, and then that information has been brought forward to the Capital Improvements Committee for an initial education on the process and the types of projects. There were 17 projects that were submitted, various levels of costs, complexity, and proposed scheduling as well. We've been very engaged with each of the departments so that we can understand what the need for these potential projects are, how they operate now, how they will operate in the future, and if there are any alternatives to their proposed idea. So that will then go through a review by the Capital Improvements Committee, which has Capital Improvement staff, Building Maintenance staff, and CEO representation on that committee. And there's nine criteria that we will gauge those with, and then we will be continuing to move forward on the recommendations of which projects would move forward and when, knowing that this is a five-year capital improvement plan with $1 million anticipated per year. With that, I'm going to turn this over to Brad. Oh, excuse me, let me -- before I do that, this is -- these are the lists of projects that were submitted, and you can see there's 17 projects there. They're very early conceptual cost numbers there, and then on the right-hand side, you can see the process that we've been going through as well. And finally, with the recommendations, which this will be an annual basis, we'll receive those applications by the end of January every year, and we'll go through this process annually, but this is just a snapshot of where we are today. So now, I will turn it over to Brad so he can talk a little bit more about the major building maintenance.
Good morning.
Good morning. Thank you, Chair Holmes, and fellow Board members. I'm Brad Bulley, your Building Maintenance Superintendent. Today, I'm here to provide a brief update regarding the VFA implementation project. VFA is an acronym, stands for Vander Wheel Facility Advisors. Previous methodology for building maintenance did not have a systematic, targeted approach to assessing buildings and a clear understanding of equipment renewal cycles for each. Example of this included run-to-failure modes, limited year-to-year capital plans, and non-strategic focus going forward. The VFA implementation provides a comprehensive, holistic building approach, which was performed by licensed architects and engineers, top to bottom in our facilities encompassing roofs, HVAC, electrical systems, backup generators, et cetera. With VFA, we now have a metric-based, proactive, strategic approach to analyzing and forecasting building maintenance renewal requirements. The benefits to addressing these requirements early will include less downtime, less energy -- emergency cost to repair, continuity of building operations, and an increase in system So this Board approved the VFA software purchase in May of 2017. We assessed 126 buildings for about 1.5 million square feet. In order to make efficient use of Placer County funding for VFA, we only selected those Placer County-owned buildings with large and more complex building systems. The list did not include such building structures as road barns, fuel canopies, and storage sheds. With this database, as Steve mentioned, it'll now be utilized to support our five-year capital plan.
Do you know how much value of those 136 buildings are as assets?
I'm sorry, say again.
The value of those buildings, 136?
Actually, yeah, well, we -- there's a slide in here, we'll get to that. I can tell you that upfront.
That's fine, we can get to it.
It's $524 million, roughly.
That's what I was thinking, it was somewhere in that neighborhood of five to six.
Yes.
Thank you.
So the goals of the assessment were to obviously narrow the list of buildings to make it more efficient, and those would have the greatest impact on our business objectives. The other goal was to determine the condition of each building using industry standards, and the third goal was to predict and estimate future costs for building system renewals in order to assist in creating our five-year capital plan. And the fourth was to score and rank each system renewal to help us determine which ones we would do first. So here's the top-level synopsis of the building data collected. We divided the county into three regions, Auburn, Eastern, and South Placer. You'll see the Five-Year Facility Condition Index. It's a term similar to what you've heard before, which is a pavement condition index used by Rose Division. Generally, the county had an average of .12, which equates to fair on the FCI scale. The scale goes from good to fair to poor to critical, so we're in the top three-quarters of that. Due to its concentration in buildings, the Auburn area has the highest percentage in all categories for gross square feet, current replacement value, and Facility Condition Index. The FCIs were pretty close from region to region, .02 in the south, we have much newer buildings in the south, .18 in the eastern, we have a lot of older buildings in the eastern part of the county, and .19 in Auburn. Also, to enhance the communication efforts, we'll be sharing the VFA information with department heads through a portal called VFA Facility View. Each department head will be given a log-on account, which allows read-only access to the countywide VFA database.
I'm sorry, will the supervisors be given that same log-on?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Yes. So this is a first cut at our fiscal year 1819 VFA requirements placed into project fund buckets. We are evaluating these VFA requirements using a three-step process. First, we look at useful life, what VFA kicks out based on age and condition of each asset. Then we go into a pair-wise analysis, we compare building system types, such as plumbing versus fire life safety. We also looked at asset types or building use types, public safety, say, versus vehicle support, and then it generates a score internally in the software based on that. And then third, Placer County staff evaluate the outcome from this analysis. Again, this is a first cut of the 1819 project fund lists, and then we'll look toward the Board of Supervisors and CEO's office to make some more strategic decisions as we move forward. And some of those decisions are things that we must do, like backup generators, roofs, HVAC equipment. We also can look at run-to-fail mode. We may select buildings like the old DeWitt buildings that we choose not to put any money into, just let them run to failure. Hold for major renovation. Steve mentioned the Elections Warehouse, which is going to get renovated. It's an older building, but it's in the 20-year master plan. We probably wouldn't put any dollars into that, allow the renovation project to upgrade the building. And then the last would be the decision financing on new buildings, buildings such as HHS, Coroner, that affect our spending decisions, or if we're anticipating grant money for generators, we would hold off on those decisions. I think you'll agree, Placer County facilities play a critical role in helping our organization achieve its operational mission. They also impact spending, both capital, operational, influence our risk, such as business continuity, health and safety, regulatory and reputation, and sway the experiences of our key stakeholders, such as Placer County employees, our business partners, and the general public. VFA's output will help Placer County turn our data into a capital plan that is well-researched, well-organized, and forward-looking. Thank you.
All right. Any other questions?
I can provide just a minute or two on next steps. So now that the VFA effort is done, we have an excellent dataset relative to our existing buildings that's going to allow us to make much more quantitative decisions moving forward, much more strategic decisions about how and when we put our dollars into use relative to the existing buildings we have. We've also made a lot of progress on building that process for considering renovation requests and have been reaching out directly to departments over the last couple of months relative to those requests. And we heard the Board loud and clear, both in March and August of last year, when your Board asked us to make sure that departments and department heads were much more engaged in this process, and we've taken that to heart and incorporated that into all the work that we're doing. We went to the department heads meeting in March and had a similar, although a bit briefer conversation about major maintenance as well as the renovation requests. We're going to be working both with CEO staff and DPWF staff over the next couple of weeks to take a first cut at preliminarily prioritizing those renovation requests and then presenting that prioritization to the department heads in April to hopefully stimulate a discussion about holistically, from a more comprehensive perspective, what makes sense to implement now and what might be pushed out further in the five-year plan, or what alternatives might exist to some of those requests. So again, be working very closely with the departments over the course of this process, not necessarily promising that they're going to get the answers that they want, but making sure that they're involved every step of the way in understanding our recommendation, how we landed on it, and ultimately present it to your Board. We will be very likely coming back to the Board in May, again, as part of the budget process, with some potential options for your consideration. So what we sort of glanced over a bit today was on major maintenance, that VFA effort is showing that around $7 million worth of projects should be implemented in the first year of the CIP for major maintenance needs. If we back up to August, we assumed a placeholder of about $3 million a year for major maintenance. So one of the things we would want to present to you is funding options and sort of what you get at certain levels of investment. But one of the neat things with the VFA software is you're allowed to sort of calibrate that project list to the amount of funding that you have available. So whatever funding is available for major maintenance, we'll be able to, through that software and that effort, pick the highest priority projects to keep our buildings in the best shape possible. So we'll likely be back, I believe it's the second meeting in May, all in an effort to pull together this first five-year capital improvement plan in draft form for the Board's consideration in June along with the proposed budget.
Is that it?
That's it.
All right, any more comments from Board members?
Yeah, I actually did have a question. So I thank you so much for moving forward with this VFA piece. I think it's going to be very helpful to us in making some informed decisions about what we really should be acting upon. These four categories, must-do, run-to-fail, hold for major renovation, and requires-program decision/financing. Do we have even a general idea at this point of what that $7 million number sort of falls into each of those buckets?
We do. We have a very detailed list right now that comprises the 7.4 million. Again, we're going to take another cut at that and give some funding options coming back.
So but on first blush, like, how much of that 7.4 million is in the must-do category?
That we haven't run yet.
Okay.
Right, those are discussions that'll be forthcoming.
Okay. I'm just trying to get my mind around what do we really have to jump on kind of immediately, but it sounds like we're probably going to need to wait till May to really hear that information. Okay, thank you.
We have to leave with some kind of cliffhanger today.
I know.
Keep the interest.
I love the mystery.
Any other comments?
Just great work, thanks.
This is just an update, there's no action required, but anybody from the public wish to address us about this item? Seeing none, we'll move to Item 7B, Criteria Documents for New Coroner Facility Consultant Services Agreement.
Good morning again, Steve Newsom, Deputy Director of Capital Improvements. In August of 2017, your Board approved a capital project to replace the existing morgue with a new facility to be located at the Bill Santucci Justice Center. A program for the new facility was developed by the Smith Group in 2017, identifying types and sizes of the building spaces. Criteria Documents will expand upon the program, identifying specific physical characteristics of the building spaces, their relationships to other spaces, major building systems, and site requirements. The program, along with the Criteria Documents, will be included in the solicitation for design-build entities to design and construct the new Coroner Facility. We're requesting the approval of the Consultant Services Agreement with Leonakis to develop the Criteria Documents and provide additional consulting services during the design and construction phases in an amount not to exceed $836,175. Funding for this is provided in the fiscal year 1718 final budget project capital project fund. Capital Improvement staff will return to your Board in late 2018 to request approval to proceed with construction using the design-build procurement process, with estimated construction completion in the fall of 2020. With that, are there any questions?
Any questions from Board members? Supervisor Grant.
Yes, that contract was submitted to County Council for review?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
I just want to say thank you for moving forward on this. I think it was, while there was a lot of discussion around a lot of the proposed projects, I think this was one that our Board was just so clearly aligned on that we needed to get going on and as quickly as possible, so thank you for your work around that.
You're welcome.
All righty. Anyone from the public wish to address the Board on this item? Seeing none, we'll bring it back for approval.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve a consultant services agreement with Leonakis to provide criteria documents to be produced, included in the design-build delivery solicitation for a new Coroner Facility. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed, any abstentions? Hearing none, the item is moved. Thank you, gentlemen. And you too, Gretchen. Just a minute shy of our 10:30 timed item.
Pardon?
Oh, did I miss that?
Yeah.
Oh, I see. Excuse us. All right, now we'll go to our 10:15 timed item, County Executive, Fiscal Year 2017-18 Midyear Fiscal Update. Mr. Bick, how are you doing?
Good, how are you?
All right. Good morning again.
Good morning again, Kate Sampson with your County Executive Office. I'm pleased this morning to present to you a short update on fiscal year 1718 budget. I'll also be reviewing- I'll also be reviewing or providing a status report on development of next year's budget and requesting your approval of a couple of mid-year budget revisions to facilitate recent direction provided by your board. We do have a presentation. There we go. All right, so just as a reminder, for your current year, your operating budgets total about eight hundred and sixty-five million dollars. Your general fund is just short of five hundred million dollars, representing about fifty-seven percent of your operating budgets. Again, as a reminder, for all funds, all operating funds, salaries and benefits makes up about forty percent of your budget, where services and supplies is just over twenty percent, with the remaining categories rounding out the pie there. Through month seven of the current fiscal year, your general fund is about fifty percent expended. That's right about where you want to be. So based on that information, we've conducted some analysis on projecting where we might end this fiscal year. We expect we will be just about a percent and a half low on our revenue projections, which again is a good position to be out of four hundred and forty-six million dollars budgeted. We anticipate coming in right around four hundred and forty-one million. On the expenditure side, we're projecting to be under budget by about five and a half percent. The majority of the savings in your general fund is due to vacancies in your funded positions at about seven and a half percent, or a little over thirteen million dollars of savings and compensation there. On salaries or services and supplies, we've got a number of large contracts that are not anticipated to be fully expended, so we're planning to achieve a savings of about six and a half million dollars there. When the, when all is said and done, we anticipate having an estimated carryover fund balance for use with next year's budget of about twenty-one and a half million dollars. So based on that, I'd like to call your attention to this chart. You'll want to focus on the bottom of those bars, the dark blue section, is your unassigned fund balance, or we often refer to it as carryover fund balance. So those funds are available from year to year to fund operations in the following year. But you'll see that dark blue component diminishes over time. When we project out the next few years, you'll see, starting at that twenty-one and a half million dollars, that unassigned fund balance continues to trend down. And there's a few reasons for that. One is, the green section of the bar is maintained at a healthy rate. That's your contingency reserves. That's according to the board's budget and fiscal policy. We maintain that at five percent of general fund operations for a rainy day, in case there are economic factors that influence our revenues in the future. You also have the light blue section, which is your capital reserves. Those are quite healthy, and we continue to contribute to them every year. So those are all good things, that you've got some healthy reserves in your general fund for particular uses. But in terms of that unassigned fund balance or carryover fund balance, we do project a decline over the next few years. And this next chart helps explain why. So here we have, the green bar is total revenues, money coming in. Blue bar is money going out for your total expenditures in the general fund. And that gray line shows you the amount of unassigned fund balance or carryover fund balance that's available at the end of each year. And you see, starting in two thousand eighteen, that we have a shift where your blue bar starts exceeding the level of your green bar, meaning that while revenues are still growing, your expenses are growing at a faster rate. So that's something we're going to want to monitor over the next couple of years. That's certainly something that we are paying close attention to as we begin developing your budget for next year. Because if that trend continues, you'll see that gray line continues to go down. There's less and less available each year for the board's use in future budget years.
Kate, before you move forward, can you go back one slide, please, to general fund reserves and fund balance?
Yes.
I note on the two thousand sixteen slide, we have a category that doesn't seem to transfer into the future years, and it's a little hard to tell because the colors are very similar. I think it's unfunded liability reserves?
That's correct, you have that right. That's two point nine million dollars that you have in reserves, that the board elected to reserve to establish a pension stabilization rate trust, or a section one fifteen trust fund. Part of the action requested today is actually bringing that out of reserves so we can transfer it to the trust fund. Those funds are available, we can pull them out of the trust fund at any time, but they will gain investment earnings while they're there, and the purpose is to, over time, help stabilize our pension rates as they climb in the future.
Okay, I just really wanted to call attention to that, so thank you.
Thank you, excellent point. So as I mentioned, we are seeing a trend where expenditures are going to grow at a faster rate than our revenues. Part of the reason for that, alluding to your comment Supervisor Montgomery, is our PERS contributions. As PERS makes adjustments to its actuarial assumptions, our costs each year over the next several years will climb. This graph shows that hill moving upwards in the future. The good news is, we have gotten some more refined projections from PERS. They're not quite as drastic as what we originally received maybe a year or so ago. So, you know, at its highest point, we anticipate needing to put another about twelve million dollars towards our PERS contributions. The trust fund could potentially be helpful if we so choose to dip into that in order to help smooth those rates. Or we can give you some options for accommodating that in your operating budgets moving forward. But it's certainly something to be monitored. It is a cost driver that will constrain your general fund sources over the next couple of years. Just a couple notes on some of your other funds. Public Safety Fund is projected to actually be right on target in terms of budget. We're seeing less than a one percent variance there for revenues and expenditures. While the good news is, that's a pretty accurate budget, one thing we need to look at is, last year, the fund generated a little over six million dollars in carryover fund balance. This year, we're projecting more around a half million dollars, so there will be less available to fund future year operations. So just a note there, we will vet that as part of our budget analysis and provide you, again, with some options later on in the process for how we might continue to fund public safety at the level you would like. In your library fund, the, this year, the board elected to provide an additional contribution in order to professionalize some of the staff in your libraries, as opposed to using extra help on kind of a regular basis. Not all of those positions have been filled, so there is a significant carryover balance that is projected in that fund. That could be used to fund future operations or special projects in the libraries in the future. And then of note is your fire fund, which is trending this year as anticipated, but just a reminder that we canceled reserves this year in order to balance the budget in your fire fund, and there are ongoing sustainability concerns for those fire areas under Placer County's jurisdiction. So we will, that we have staff working on options for how we might address that in the future. You will hear more about that in coming months, but certainly something that we'll want to call out, especially for your attention for next year in the budget development. So as I mentioned, part of the action this morning is to approve three budget revisions. I would call these cleanup items. Based on your board's direction, in this fiscal year, we need to move the funds where they belong in order to make the expenditures you have authorized. So in relation to the section one fifteen trust that I mentioned, funding for the sustainable irrigation pilot program, and funding for the countywide radio project, we just need to move funds to the appropriate place so we can accommodate your direction. So looking forward to developing next year's budget. I'll just remind you, we have a number of fiscal sustainability guidelines based on your budget and fiscal policy that we use as a framework to evaluate budget requests. They include long-term budget planning with economic analysis. We have a robust five-year fiscal model that we use to help prepare those projections for you. We look to align costs with programs for transparency, so we know what it costs to provide a particular service. We do evaluate budget variances and analyze those that are unanticipated so that we can plan in the future. We maintain appropriate reserve levels. We talked a little bit about that earlier. Want to make sure your reserves are in accordance with board adopted policy. And of course, we always look to leverage external funding sources, like state and federal funds, for new and ongoing programs. And lastly, ongoing expenditures, we would like to ensure that those are paid with sustainable resources, and we particularly evaluate that when it comes to what we call supplemental requests or additions to budgets. As departments identify programs and services that they would like to augment or add, we do do quite a bit of analysis around how those will be funded and whether those are sustainable options for you moving forward. So just a look at our requests that are above and beyond kind of our base budget for eighteen nineteen. They total almost twenty million dollars over a number of funds, and I think to date, they include thirty-seven and a half positions that have been requested. So where we are in the current process is, departments have submitted their budget requests for next year, staff is currently vetting those, and then we'll turn our attention to these supplemental requests, which again would be augmented or new programs and services for your consideration. Certainly a concern, as I mentioned, is that, you know, we anticipate having about twenty-two million dollars in carryover fund balance, and conveniently, that is just about what we think we will need to balance operations for next year. So there will likely be a limited amount of additional funding for, say, one-time spending on supplemental requests. But these projections are preliminary. We will certainly have revised information for you as the process continues this spring, and we'll give you the latest and greatest as it becomes available. So just for your information, next steps in the budget development process include your first meeting in May. Departments will be making short presentations to you to provide you the highlights of what they see as being the most pressing issues moving into fiscal year eighteen nineteen. Then the second meeting in May, we will recap for you what you heard and have a discussion with you about how to prioritize any available funds. And then in June, we will bring you a proposed budget for consideration, and then, as standard practice, in September, we would hold the final budget hearing. So that's a quick recap of where we're at in the current year and what we're looking to for next year. I'm available for any questions and would ask your board's consideration for approval of those budget revisions.
Supervisor Montgomery?
Kate, thank you very much for the presentation, and Mr. Vick as well. You did great. Just wanted to check in a little bit. I've heard some concerns from some of our local city partners around shrinking sales tax revenue, and some challenges for their own budgets around that. I note ours seems to be pretty close to what we had projected. Do you have any idea why there's kind of a difference between the incorporated versus the unincorporated areas within Placer County?
Well, what I would offer is that, in a number of cases, an incorporated city relies quite a bit much, quite a bit more on sales tax as part of their general fund revenues. It would typically maybe be in the forty percent range of their general fund revenues, whereas our general fund relies much more heavily on property taxes, which tend to be a bit more stable. They're less volatile and, you know, affected by changes in the economy. Our projections for sales tax have been fairly accurate, but certainly as consumers move more to online sales, that can impact, you know, what we receive as compared to receipts from brick and mortar stores, so that is something we monitor closely.
Yeah, and I also just wanted to thank you. You touched on it lightly, but Supervisor Holmes and I have been working on this pretty intensively, that sustainability challenges related not just to the fire fund, but Placer County Fire specifically, and some of our smaller local fire districts. And I think that's going to be a conversation that's going to be fairly fraught moving forward, because we truly can't continue just to provide general funds to some of these areas that may not be covering their own costs for fire service. Thank you.
Any other comments from board members? Mr. Vick, did you have anything to add?
You got it all?
Okay. All right, good, thank you. Anyone in the audience wish to address the board on this update? Seeing none, let's see, we're asked to approve the fiscal year two thousand seventeen eighteen mid-year budget revisions. Been moved and seconded. This is a roll call vote.
Duran?
Yes.
Wiegand?
Yes.
Euler?
Yes.
Holmes?
Yes. Thank you. Now we'll move to the ten thirty timed item. Is that right?
Board, I'd like to take this opportunity, we've, regarding item, regarding the transient occupancy tax appeal with Grand LeBach and Management Company, we've made some tremendous efforts and some conversations that are ongoing. I'd ask that we had postponed this till the future date. I think we were talking about the next meeting, is that correct, Eric? April tenth? To bring this back to the board for consideration.
All right, fine, we'll just, is there a time certain, or do we not have that yet?
I don't believe we have that.
Okay, all right.
But that is a date certain?
Yes.
Yeah, okay, that's fine. We don't have to take action on that.
I would just like to comment, and I would just like to thank our CEO, Todd Leopold, for his involvement in trying to get a resolution to this. Many of you may not know, Todd took time out of his weekend to sit down and meet with the owners of Grand LeBach, and for a couple of hours to try to come to some resolution to this. So I just want to thank him for his efforts.
All right. Thank you, Jack. Now we're at, let's see, the purchase of sixty tourist accommodation units?
Good morning, Chair, members of the Board of Supervisors, Lori Moore's Property Manager for the Department of Public Works and Facilities. And I hand over the presentation to Susie Voss from the Real Estate Services Division. Thank you.
Thanks, Lori. I am Susie Voss, a Senior Project Manager with Real Estate Services Division, formerly the Property Management Division. Today, I'm here asking your board to authorize the acquisition of sixty tourist accommodation units from the California Tahoe Conservancy for transfer to the Tahoe City Lodge project and adopt a resolution authorizing the Director of Public Works and Facilities to finalize and execute an agreement of purchase and sale in conformance to the material terms and in accordance with the tourist accommodation unit transfer agreement at a price of twelve thousand two hundred and fifty dollars each, for a total purchase price up to seven hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars. A budget revision is required to move two hundred and forty-eight thousand dollars from the Tahoe Tourism and Promotion Fund one forty-five to Capital Projects forty-nine forty-seven in order to fund seven hundred and fifty thousand in total acquisition costs. In two thousand fourteen, Keela Tahoe LLC purchased the former Hendrickson property in Tahoe City for the Tahoe City Lodge, intended to revitalize Tahoe City and to provide for much-needed new hotel rooms. In May two thousand sixteen, your board approved the North Lake Tahoe Economic Incentive Program to help incentivize investments in Kings Beach and the Tahoe City Town Centers. This incentive program was created to address extraordinary challenges to redeveloping blighted commercial properties in the Tahoe Basin, and it has two components, a TAU cost offset and an infrastructure cost offset. The TAU component is envisioned to fund, acquire, and bank TRPA land development commodities required to develop overnight visitor accommodations and to allocate them to projects that meet established criteria. In September two thousand sixteen, Keela Tahoe applied for TAU through the program in order to develop the Tahoe City Lodge project. This project was approved by your board in December two thousand sixteen, along with the Tahoe Basin Area Plan. Since that time, Keela Tahoe has determined the project has fifty-eight TAU's and requires another sixty, including fourteen TAU's that must come from Stream Environment Zone. On January ninth, two thousand eighteen, your board determined Keela Tahoe's project met the threshold criteria to participate in the incentive program, and acted to approve an agreement to allocate sixty TAU's to the project. Staff has identified that California Tahoe Conservancy, CTC, has sufficient TAU's for sale to the county at a price of twelve thousand two hundred and fifty dollars each. And on June fifteenth, two thousand seventeen, the CTC authorized its staff to sell these TAU's and execute a purchase and sale agreement with the county. Keela Tahoe LLC... Keela Tahoe LLC is also a party to this agreement. STAFF has negotiated the following material terms with CTC. Number one, the purchase price is twelve thousand, two hundred and fifty dollars each for sixty TAU's for a total of seven hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars. Number two, the TAU's originate from CTC property known as Patent Landing in Carnelian Bay and Sandy Beach in Tahoe Vista, which equate to the sending parcels. Number three, the receiving parcels are the two APNs for the Tahoe City Lodge. Number four, a ten percent refundable deposit is required upon execution of the purchase and sale agreement. Number five, First American Title will handle the escrow with a term of twelve months and the county will pay a five hundred dollar escrow fee. Number six, Keela Tahoe LLC is responsible for a six hundred and eighteen dollar TRPA permit fee. And finally, number seven, at close of escrow, First American Title will disperse the purchase price to CTC, record the TRPA deed restriction, and record the notice of transfer, option to repurchase, and restrictions on assignment of TAU's, which includes a three-year buyback by CTC. In conclusion, we'd like to request that your board approve our recommendation, and I'd like to welcome any questions from the board.
Any questions? Are you seeing none? Anyone in the audience wish to address the board on this item? Seeing none, we're asked to adopt a resolution, excuse me, authorizing the purchase of tourist accommodation units with the California Tahoe Conservancy. Do we have a motion?
Yes, so moved, being certain that we include the materials terms section from the staff report.
All righty. It's been moved and seconded to move the item. We don't need a roll call for this first action, do we? No. Okay. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Hearing none. Now I'll ask for approve a budget revision of two hundred and forty-eight thousand dollars from the Tahoe Tourism Promotions Fund 145 to the Capital Project Number 4947.
So moved.
It's been moved and seconded to prove item two. This is a roll call vote.
Duran.
Yes.
Wiegand.
Yes.
Euler.
Montgomery.
Yes.
Holmes.
Yes. Thank you. The item has moved. All right. Now we'll move to item D. Thank you very much for bringing this forward. Purchase and sale agreement for three hundred and ninety-nine point seven plus or minus acre Bradley property in Sheridan, California, and related consultant services agreement, Westerville Ecological Services LLC. Mr. McKenzie? Oh, it's Ms. Moore's.
Hello again, Chairman, members of the board. Again, Lori Moore's Property Manager. I'm here today with Greg McKenzie, the county's Placer County Conservation Program Administrator, seeking approval of a key acquisition of conservation land in support of the implementation of the Placer County Conservation Program. In a separate Community Resource Development Agency item subsequent to this item, you will hear some recommendations also from Greg related to an acquisition of a conservation easement from Westerville Ecological Services LLC or Westerville from here on out. And you'll hear that following this, this presentation and your board's actions on this item. For this item, we're asking your board to authorize the Placer Legacy Program acquisition of the Bradley property from Westerville for five million, two hundred and ninety-six thousand and twenty-five dollars and adopt a resolution authorizing the Director of Public Works and Facilities or designee to take all necessary actions to complete the acquisition in conformance with the material terms and subject to county council concurrence. The Bradley property is approximately three hundred and ninety-nine point seven acres, located in the proposed Placer County Conservation Program's reserved acquisition area is located in Sheridan on the south side of Riosa Road, approximately one mile east of Highway sixty-five. STAFF is also asking your board's approval of a consultation, consultant services agreement with Westerville and authorization for the Director of Public Works and Facilities to execute the contract. They'll provide conservation land studies, habitat enhancements, maintenance, monitoring, reporting, and other necessary services in an amount not to exceed six hundred and fifty-eight thousand, nine hundred and twenty-two dollars over a three-year term. These services are important to support early implementation of the PCCP and the Western Placer County In-Lu Fee Program. Finally, we're seeking your board's approval of a budget revision to provide for the total acquisition cost estimated at five million, three hundred and twenty-four thousand dollars. At this time, there is currently one million dollars in the open space, in the open space fund. So we're asking for the open space fund reserves to be canceled in the amount of three hundred, three million, nine hundred and fifty-five thousand, three hundred and seventy-four dollars and transfer in three hundred and sixty-eight thousand, six hundred and twenty-six from Trust Fund 370. Now I'll hand over the remainder of the presentation for Greg to provide the PCCP benefits of this proposed acquisition.
Thank you.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, ladies and gentlemen. Again, Greg McKenzie, your Placer County Conservation Program Administrator. As Lori mentioned, the Bradley property is located just to the east of the town of Sheridan. It's located in and amongst the Placer County Conservation Program's Reserve Acquisition Area, Proposed Reserve Acquisition Area, and adjacent to other existing conserve and future conservation sites. The Bradley acquisition is important for many reasons. It implements several general plan, policies, goals, Placer Legacy goals, and Placer County Conservation Program objectives in the first few years of early implementation. On your screen is a Habitat Management and Monitoring Plan cover sheet that was prepared by Westerville Ecological Services. They early on agreed to append their property and this plan to the Placer County Draft, Western, Western Placer County Draft In-Lu Fee Program, which has been submitted to the state and federal agencies, has been accepted as complete. And yesterday was the deadline for comments on that program, and we have a meeting scheduled to review those comments in the not-too-distant future. Westerville acquired the property for its obvious wetland and natural resource conservation values. On your screen is an exhibit of the wetland delineation prepared for this site. Obviously, with all the colors on that map, this property has significant wetland and natural resource conservation values, including twenty-one point eight-four acres of viral pool type wetlands, which happen to be occupied with viral pool listed species, which are critical to early implementation for the conservation program. Also includes one point two acres of repair-in wetland within the Yankee Slough Stream System, sixteen point five eight, five nine acres of emergent marsh, has species in that marsh, including the California black rail and tricolored blackbird nesting habitat. Tricolored blackbird is actually up for listing, I believe, this month, if not next month, at the State Fish and Game Commission. So increasingly becoming a very important species, and we have it covered by the PCP and the first acquisition in front of you for some of its habitat. The California black rail similarly has very low take limits as proposed in the draft PCP for reasons because it's a very reclusive bird, very difficult to identify its habitat. We happen to know through earlier studies by UC Davis and Cal that this site is occupied. Again, the site has significant wetland resources. STAFF has been in pursuit of this property and its acquisition for many years, actually predates my time at the county. My predecessor was very interested in this acquisition for obvious reasons because of significant seasonal viral pool emergent marsh-type wetlands, viral pool grassland landscape and the Yankee Slough marsh behind it. Another seasonal wetland, viral pool complex. U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service has provided its concurrence with the site to be added to the future PCCP reserve system. As it relates to the consultant services aspect of this acquisition, this is one of those where we have not only a willing seller, but also a willing consultant who's principal business is providing these types of services, the design, build, construction. And importantly, for this piece of property, maintenance and monitoring of an existing viral pool wetland landscape. And so Westerville was agreeable and amenable to continuing their current monitoring of the site, current management of the site, including within that site holds a ten-year grazing lease, which the county will take on going forward. These costs associated with the consultant services agreement match up identically with the PCP identified costs for the same services. So with that, given the late hour in the morning, perhaps I will give it to you for questions. Westerville Ecological Services is in the audience. Other members of the public may wish to speak to the item.
All right. Thank you. Supervisor Duran?
Yes, thank you for bringing this forward. What is Trust Fund 370? How is it funded and what is presently the balance?
That's the Swainson-Hawke Trust Fund, Swainson-Hawke Preserve Fund?
Swainson-Hawke Fund.
Yes, and it is in that, that's the sum in that fund.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other comments or questions from board members? Seeing none, anyone from the audience wish to address this item? Here we go. Please come forward.
Morning.
Good morning. Good morning, Chairman Holmes, members of the Board of Supervisors. I'm George Cammer, Land Use Attorney here in the region for the past twenty-eight years, and my pleasure to address you briefly this morning. Robert, don't frown, smile. I'm going to say good stuff today. Thanks, Kirk. I'm here representing the Lincoln Village Three Land Owners Association, which is a group of the largest landowners in the two thousand and forty-four acre Lincoln Village Three Special Planning Area. They want to express their support for the PCCP and their support for these acquisitions today. We think it's a very important, major first step for the board to take in seeing that the PCCP becomes a reality. It's really, we believe, the key to expeditious environmental permitting in the long run for Placer County, and certainly the merits that have been proposed for it in being a one-stop shop for permitting, I think, are very legitimate. We think that the acquisitions today are very important to the PCCP in particular because of the get-ahead, stay-ahead provision in it that Greg was explaining to you here just a little bit ago. That is, is not an easy thing to implement, and in this current environment with drastically accelerating land prices, I think this is a real window of opportunity for the board to get a couple of very key properties, and especially with such very cooperative and willing consultants. I like that. That was good. I've met willing sellers, but never willing consultants. So that's good. Thanks, Westerville. Anyway, so we're simply here to urge you to move forward with the acquisition, approve use of the funds for this purpose. We think it fully implements the Placer Legacy's vision that goes way back to all of your earliest visions for this, Robert Wiegand in particular, who was the genesis of this, I believe, and gets you an even bigger bang for the buck in preserving wetlands, endangered species, waterfowl habitat, and other things in addition to open space. So we urge your support. Thank you.
All right. Thank you.
If you have any questions, let me know, but I think Greg's probably the most qualified answer.
All right.
Thanks.
Thank you, sir.
Good morning.
Hi, good morning. Travis Hemm, I'm Vice President of Westerville Ecological Services. We're a large landowner here in Placer County, but we're also land stewards and believe in responsible land ownership and land stewardship. I've been going back to cap to cap for fifteen years with the Land Use Natural Resources Subcommittee, and every year it's on the agenda item, Placer County Conservation Plan, let's get this done. In the last five years, all the higher-ups at the state or the federal agencies have said, well, Travis, Westerville, why don't you get involved? So for five years, I've said, we're going to get involved and we're going to help see this plan get through. So in April, we go back, and I'm hoping I can go back and say, Placer County is serious. They're moving forward. Westerville is assisting, and this is a big deal for this plan to get, get done. So I appreciate your support. Thank you for taking the time.
Thank you, Travis. Anyone else? Seeing none, we'll bring them back to the board. Should I take these three, one at a time? We're asked to authorize Placer Legacy Program acquisition of Bradley property, three hundred and ninety-nine point seven acre parcel. I'll entertain a motion. Moved and seconded to approve item D1. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? Hearing none. Now we'll be asked, D2, to approve a consultant services agreement subject to county council and risk management concurrence with Westerville Ecological Services LLC. It's moved and seconded to approve item D2. All those in favor, please say aye. And now we're asked to approve a budget, budget revision to cancel open space trust, open space fund reserves in the amount of three million, nine hundred and fifty-five thousand, three hundred and seventy-four dollars and transfer three hundred and sixty-eight thousand, six hundred and twenty-six dollars from Trust Fund 370, four twenty, to complete the funding for the acquisition. It's been moved and seconded to approve the item. This is a roll call vote, please.
Duran.
Yes.
Wiegand.
Yes.
Euler.
Montgomery.
Yes.
And Holmes.
Yes. The item is moved. Thank you very much. Now, don't go away. We're moved to item eight. A Community Development Resource Agency purchase and sale agreement of the Markham Ravine Ranch Conservation Easement and related mitigation credits and services, Westerville Ecological Services. Mr. McKenzie.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, ladies and, ladies and gentlemen. Greg McKenzie, your Placer County Conservation Program Administrator once again. As Lori mentioned on the prior item, this item is separate but related to the prior one. When Westerville approached the county with Bradley acquisition, at the same time they approached the county with the Markham Ravine Ranch acquisition, we've since been working through diligent negotiations with them, so it's a pleasure to be here this morning. Requesting you to authorize the Community Development Resource Agency Director or designee to negotiate and sign the proposed material price and terms with Westerville Ecological Services for the acquisition of a conservation easement over the Markham Ravine Ranch property comprising approximately two hundred and ninety-seven acres in the proposed reserve acquisition area for the Placer County Conservation Program. And B, to review the proposed material price and terms for the acquisition of wetland mitigation credits and services associated with the Placer County Conservation Program and/or Western, in, Western Placer In-Lu Fee Program, and provide direction to STAFF. The first item, A, has an amount of acquisition for the conservation easement of two million, three hundred and fifty-four thousand, seven hundred and eleven dollars. Item B has an estimated value, which we'll get to in a minute, of seven million, seven hundred and five thousand and nine dollars for all mitigation credits, rights, and services associated with the property. This morning, we're not asking for your board's final approval. We will return in open session for approval of definitive agreement after we've continued, hopefully, by your direction with our good faith negotiations with Westerville Ecological Services. I will note for the record that there is a correction in the STAFF report on page eighty-six of the board memo under the Conservation Easement section. It says Westerville is willing to sell fee title. Error on my part. I apologize. It should say they are willing to sell a conservation easement to the county. So this piece of property, the Markham Ravine Ranch property, is located just south of Markham Ravine. Markham Ravine actually flows across the top of the property, just west and immediately adjacent to Brewer Road, west of the city of Lincoln. This is an interesting property and project. Westerville initially had submitted to the state and federal agencies a bank-enabling instrument to approve this property as a mitigation bank. So this is the cover sheet of the Markham Ravine mitigation, habitat mitigation and monitoring plan that was submitted as part of that. They have since suspended that application pending your, your direction and our negotiations to acquire the conservation easement. to acquire the conservation easement and the rights, credits, and services associated with the property. This one is a little bit difficult, I wouldn't say difficult, but complex in its terms, and the reason being, step one is Westerville actually needs to acquire the site, they're under contract to acquire the site from the current landowner. We have to negotiate the terms of the conservation easement, which is the Placer County Conservation Program template easement as it exists today. The state and federal agencies have to approve either and/or the Placer County Conservation Program or the Western Placer In-Lu Fee Program in order to effectuate our ability to move this program forward. Your Board would need to adopt either or those programs. The state and federal agencies need to approve the Habitat Mitigation and Monitoring Plan with the credits associated with the plan. Currently, that total estimated purchase price is tied to that available amount of credits that agencies ultimately will release. And then finally, we need to collect fees under the PCP and/or the ILF In-Lu Fee Program, that being an important part to funding the acquisition, since this property is planned to solely be acquired from a conservation easement perspective and the credits solely funded for their acquisition through the fee programs. So this is an aerial view of the property in the foreground during what I'm assuming is a flood stage in Markham Ravine. Obviously, pieces and parts of the property are flooded in this instance. This is today, an irrigated pasture. It makes it a very, well, I wouldn't say simple, but easier from a regulatory context to get a mitigation plan approved on this site. The site historically was vernal pool grasslands, converted to irrigated pasture. We'd like to put it back into vernal pool grasslands and associated wetlands for obvious This is an exhibit from the Habitat Mitigation and Monitoring Plan. It includes approximately, as planned, 34.76 acres of vernal pool-type wetlands, being the light blue-colored wetlands and swales, and the green wetlands being approximately 17 acres adjacent to Markham Ravine, which would be more so riparian wetlands associated with that stream system. Riparian canopy and adjacent wetlands, this is Markham Ravine. It doesn't happen to be on the project site. This is what we would like to see, Markham Ravine flowing and the adjacent habitat value established as part of this restoration plan. There are a few exclusions on this property, including a power line easement. There's also an existing agres property on this parcel. This parcel has been in irrigated pasture for many, many years. Bert Lefty grazes this property currently. Grazing is planned to continue into the future associated, once we have the vernal pools and wetlands established. This property would need to continue to be grazed for habitat management and fuel reduction purposes. And again, we received a letter on this property as well from the U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service with their concurrence with the acquisition of the property. So with that, maybe I'll stop here once again. Westerville is in the audience. Maybe public comment from the audience? I'm available to answer any questions, but my request is direct staff to continue in its good faith negotiations with Westerville Ecological Services and return an open session with a definitive agreement for your approval.
All righty. Any questions from Board members? Seeing none, does anyone in the audience wish to address the Board on this item? Seeing none, we'll bring them back to the Board for action. Can we take one and two? Yes. One action? Okay. All righty, it's been moved and seconded to approve item A1 and 2. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? Hearing none, the item is moved. Thank you very much, everyone, I appreciate that. And now, we will go to closed session? Do you want to take us into closed session? Thanks.
The Board will now adjourn to closed session for a conference with legal counsel In closed session, the Board had a conference with legal counsel to discuss three matters of existing litigation in workers' compensation claim. The Board heard a report and gave direction to counsel in two related litigation cases. The Board heard a report of the recent decisions by the Superior Court, and the Board also considered a matter of public employee appointment and unanimously confirmed the appointment of Suzanne Vincy as the County Veteran Services Officer. That concludes the closed session report.
And I'd like to adjourn this meeting. Yesterday, we also had a very important member of our community, particularly from Lincoln, Warren Bostick, passed away. He was a volunteer firefighter and was very involved in his community, and for that reason, we will adjourn in the memory of Warren Bostick. And that concludes the items for the Board. Thank you.